Good evening, everyone. Calling the meeting to order, I'm Adam City Clerk. Madam City Clerk, can you call the roll?
Mayor Weinberg.
Here.
Vice Mayor Joel.
Here.
Commissioner Bloom. Commissioner Friedland.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Marks.
Here.
Commissioner Stern.
Here.
Mr. Wasson.
Here.
And Mr. Myers. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Manager, any deletions or additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, 9A is being removed from the agenda. It'll be brought back at a later date.
Okay, 9A has been removed. We'll move on to number four, special presentations. The first one is a proclamation. We have the Deputy Counsel General from Israel here. Going to do a proclamation in honor of Israel's 75th anniversary if the commissioners can join me down below. I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Cruz.
Good evening, everybody. We're very proud and honored to have a special proclamation today. As most of you know, Israel is going to be celebrating its 75th anniversary in just a couple of weeks. I'm privileged to be going as part of the Greater Miami Jewish Federation mission that's going to Israel, and we're going to have the largest international delegation going to Israel, the one from Miami, because in Miami, we are a very strong, very proud and very diverse Jewish community. We come from Latin America, from Israel, from Europe and from all over. So today, it's a special privilege for me to have with us the Deputy Counsel General of Israel, Mike Trichaz, who's here. Welcome, welcome, Mike. Mike is a terrific, not only is he doing a terrific job as Deputy Counsel General, but he's a personal friend. He's, his wife, Nama, and the kids live here in Aventura. So they're proud residents of Aventura now. He's, he's been in Costa Rica as Counsel General as well, and so we're privileged to have you here, Mike. So this proclamation from the city of Aventura goes as follows. Whereas on May 4, 1948, Israel's first Prime Minister, David Ben-Gurion, publicly read the Declaration of Independence of Israel, and every year this event is commemorated on Israel's Independence Day, also known as Yom HaAtmaut. And whereas Yom HaAtmaut is also celebrated in the United States with large festivals, events and parties organized throughout various communities. And whereas during the celebration, the Speaker of the Israeli Parliament, Orknesset, makes remarks on Mount Herzl with a dramatic televised presentation for all citizens of Israel. And whereas the day before, Yom HaAtmaut is Yom HaZikaron, which is a ceremonious occasion, a ceremonious occasion in a day of remembrance, officially known as Israel's Day of Remembrance for fallen soldiers and victims of terrorism, commemorating the Israelis who perish fighting for the life of the state of Israel. And whereas the city of Aventura would like to mark these momentous occasions and to recognize the 75th anniversary of Israel's Independence Day.
Thank you, the fun part. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Howard S. Weinberg, as mayor, and on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Aventura, Florida, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 26, 2023, as Israel's Independence Day. Okay. I want to tell you now about a young man who's an amazing speller. You all heard of the Spelling Bee. Let me tell you about a seventh grade student at Aces, James Reese. This is the second year in a row that James has represented Aces in the city of Aventura at the Miami Herald Spelling Bee. To earn his place, he won the Aces Middle School Spelling Bee. Then he passed a written test, spelling and vocabulary. And he earned an invitation to the 83rd Annual Miami Herald Spelling Bee to compete in the final in-person spell down as one of the top 25 spellers from Miami Dade and Monroe Counties. He survived several rounds, ultimately placed within the top 20. Aces is proud of the commitment and discipline James continues to show as a student and an athlete. We at the commission are also very proud. His commitment to excellence is always on display. And we will be cheering him on as he works to represent Aces one more time next year. And at this time, I would really like for James to come on up here, all the way up here to the dais, please. I don't know, maybe we're looking into the future. I have a special certificate of recognition for James presented by the city of Aventura. And while you sit in my chair, we're going to gather around and take a few pictures, but I want you to have this certificate. James knows his evening is not done because he'll be giving the Aces update in a few minutes. So heavy workload tonight, young man. Ron, you have a special presentation?
Good evening, everybody. This is the time of the night where we recognize employees for their service and how many years they've been with Aventura, and it's really nice to have a large crowd tonight. Tonight, we're honoring somebody that has spent the last 15 years with Aventura and is a supervisor of our crime scene unit in property management division. I'm going to ask Casey Martin to come up and join me. It's, it's hard to believe, as young as she is, she's been here for 15 years. She started her career in Hialeah back in 2006. She got two years under her belt and then she came to the, to the good city. I have to tell you that managing crime scene is one of the most detail-oriented things you can do. One of the most important parts of police work, especially when solving a crime, is the detailed collection of evidence and the presentation at court. If anybody's watched TV, we all know the first thing an attorney goes for is the, the evidence and how the, how the evidence makes it to court. And if there's ever a problem, it can have a really bad effect on the case. Casey's been putting together cases for a long time and just to say this, she's been very successful over, over the course of her career. She's won two Leo Awards, which is the highest honor you can get in Miami Dade County for law enforcement officers award. She's been Employee of the Month many times, and she's been the civilian officer of the year, or Employee of the Year. So she really takes her job seriously. I can also tell you, she's a really nice person, always very pleasant. She is a mom and likes camping, I don't get that, but, and we're very lucky to have her and I'm just glad that she's been here.
Okay, next we have the Aces update. It's going to be presented tonight by Vice Mayor James Reese.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager and Commission. My name is James Reese and I've been a proud Aces Eagle for eight years. I've also been, I've also been our school representative at the district spelling bee for the second year in a row. It took a lot of hard work and I hope to make it to the district spelling bee again for my, again next year for my eighth grade year. I'm truly honored to be representing Aces to share our school report with you. Aces students and staff returned from spring break, ready to make the most of the final two and a half months of the school year. We are all working hard to wrap up our curriculum and review important concepts before testing begins in May. Students have access to small group interventions, problem-based learning and spiral reviews, along with after-school tutoring and Saturday school to make a final push. At Aces, giving back remains a core element of developing the whole child, as well as providing experiences to make learning come to life. We recently hosted our annual cystic fibrosis awareness week, which brings awareness to this disease through lessons and opportunities to join it to this cause. Our elementary students donated change throughout the week in what was known as Make a Change With Your Change. While students in middle school participated in the coin clash, where their contributions turned into a fun battle of who could raise the most funds. Other activities included the special dress-done day and a bake sale. In total, Aces raised $8,049.71 for cystic fibrosis awareness. Aces provided the opportunity for two middle school field trips this month. Sixth grade students visited the Highland Hammock State Park, where they searched for fossils and Native American artifacts, canoes on the Peace River, and camped. Seventh grade students had an opportunity to travel to Washington DC, where they visited national monuments and museums. This trip is particularly, this trip is particularly impactful as seventh grade students take a civics course and can make powerful connections between their learning and, and real life. Building connections with our families is vital. Our kinder through second grade Eagles participated in our first ever Book of Palooza during Read Across America Week. Families were invited to come in and read with their child in our media center. We had over 250 members join us during this event. Family workshops continue to be made available to Aces families as an effort to build stronger relationships with the community. In March, Aces partnered with Mindful Monkeys to host a conversation on mindful screen time and technology usage. We also continued our partnership with the FIU Parent Club, discussing raising resilient children. It was a pleasure to have the opportunity to share just a few of the many great things happening at Aces, where excellence is the expectation, not the exception. Thank you for your continued support of our amazing school. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Next, Don Sofor Aventura High School update, Principal McKee.
Good evening, great to see you all. And I also want to start by thanking you for your amazing support all the way through. And then I have a quick lesson I'd like to do. This is a spelling lesson for James and his father. It's just going to take a minute. Sam, can you please stand up and Valeria and face, face James? All right, this is an acronym I want you to remember very well. This is your future high school, D-S-A-H-S, right? Do you have a commitment?
Three years.
James is not sure, he didn't even know. I'm sure you'll be recruited by a lot of schools, but we love to have you. I'm such a phenomenal young man. So congratulations on all your accomplishments. In just a moment, you'll hear about some of our school's accomplishments, but I'd like to start by making sure everyone here knows that you're invited. We had an unfortunate situation where the director, who was on staff at our school, stopped. She got another job she accepted elsewhere, and it was right before the first rehearsal for the play. So we had two students step up, seniors, one as producer, one as director, and the show is going to go on at Chicago. It's next Tuesday and Wednesday, the 11th and 12th, at the Aventura Cultural Arts Center. You're all invited, it's going to be an amazing show. So you can go to Cultural Arts Center on their website and get tickets. The following Tuesday, the 18th, we have a night of remembrance, which is being sponsored by our Jewish Student Union in support, with the support of the city. And also, we'd love to have you all there, that's 7:00 PM. Nominal fee for the play and free for that event night of remembrance, but we'd like you to RSVP just so we know how many people will be there and we have enough space for everyone. So thank you for that. Now you're going to hear from our students, but first, a former student of mine, I got to serve as her principal when she was in high school, and I was thrilled to find out after she graduated from Tosh and got a master's degree, that she was interested in going back into education. So I was able to hire her. She's a career and college specialist, and she has some very good news to share with you all. This is Ms. Olivia Nicholson.
Hello, thank you so much. Good evening, thank you for your support and for always wanting the best for our students. It's been a pleasure working with our students. It's been a pleasure working with our students and families and staff, and I'm so proud of our seniors for navigating Don Sofor's very first college application cycle without having anybody to look up to, dealing with the impacts of COVID on their applications and showing grit through what most schools claim to be the largest applicant pool in their colleges' history. With acceptances from selective institutions like Amherst, Johns Hopkins, Duke, Wash U, University of Florida, FSU, Dartmouth, Northwestern, Emory, Boston University, Carnegie Mellon, NYU, George Washington, Emerson, UVA, Northeastern, UNC, U Michigan, Tulane, USCUM, Virginia Tech, Wake Forest, and many others. Our students applied themselves fully and crafted beautiful applications, showing who they are as passionate students and involved community members. Students were assured that they could be accepted into highly selective schools, but many others did not spend their time or money applying because there was we are so blessed to have so many amazing universities in our state system that students will be able to graduate from debt-free. We are so fortunate to have a high school that helps students earn the Aces diploma. There were countless times during meetings where the Aces diploma, we're discussing financial aid packages from all the schools students have been accepted to, and then the students have the realization of what the Aces diploma means for their family, and they've inspired younger students to really work hard to achieve the Aces diploma as a result. Regarding the college application process, we are wrapping up our one-on-one meetings with juniors, which includes reviewing graduation ACE requirements, discussing SAT and ACT testing plans and essay ideas, considering possible majors, starting on their resumes, talking about their college search process and financial aid, looking through the common application and brainstorming a specific theme or angle that they'd like to take, and planning out their letters of recommendation, among other things. Seeing seniors go through this application process has helped them realize what competing against the top one percent in over twenty thousand high schools in the US means if they're considering applying to highly selective schools. The average student applying to these schools are extremely well-qualified academically, have demonstrated interest, and have pursued their passions wholeheartedly in an impactful ways. After junior junior year, families receive the College Application Handbook, which reviews everything regarding the application process. Then I meet with students and their families for the summer, since they'll be applying right after in early October for our Florida schools. We also have a college camp during the summer to finalize all application materials, and I work closely with these students who can really finalize their college essays. To give you a student's perspective, I have a wonderful student, who I'm so proud of, who was a Posse in Quest Bridge semifinalist before he withdrew his application to follow his heart. He is a Hispanic Scholarship Fund finalist, is the co-president of my SAT and ACT club, is founder of the Spanish Honor Society, and has been accepted to multiple universities with wonderful scholarships here to talk to you about his application process and ultimate decision. Please, this is Carlos Garrido.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholson. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here to talk about to talk about the school, Don Sofor Aventura High School. My name is Carlos Garrido, and I'm a senior at Don Sofor Aventura High School. And I'm here to thank you for all the help and all the work that you guys did in order to have our school and talk about the resources that we offer to our students. Since the beginning of of Don Sofor Aventura High School, and it's been a rough start, but we got it together, and we have worked through all the hard hard stuff. So I'm a I'm a senior at Don Sofor Aventura High School, and I've been accepted to multiple universities like University of Miami, University of Florida, and Florida State University. I did get a full ride to UM. And for me, my pathway always been Florida State. After I visited the college campus, I saw myself going there for my next four years and receiving my bachelor's degree and pursuing my master's later on. And even though I did get into UF, which is highly ranked compared to Florida State, my decision in pursuing my major, which is Octoeral Science, and led me to choose Florida State over UM and UF. For me, the application process was really hard since since my parents are immigrants, so they don't really know what the application process is like. But I was able to utilize the resources that the school offers, like the summer camp, and the amount of hours I spent in Ms. Nicholson's office to get my coming-up application together. I'm really happy for the opportunity of being a Barracuda, and I'm really and I and I hope to make them proud. Now, I would like to introduce my very good friend and classmate, Valeria Badra.
Hello, good evening, Major Weinberg and City Commission. Thank you for having me. My name is Valeria Badra, and I am a senior at the S A H S and a future part of the class of twenty twenty-seven. To give a bit of context, my college process was a little bit different. I was born in Venezuela, and I moved here five years ago. So because my immigration process is still ongoing, I fell under the international student umbrella during this admissions process. This changed all of my plans to stay here in Florida and study at UF because I could not apply for state aid. Luckily, our amazing college counselor, Ms. Nicholson, emailed me incessantly about an opportunity with a program called Quest Bridge, and I applied and ended up being a finalist, which allowed me to apply to some amazing universities out of state without any fees. I found out three weeks ago that I got into Amherst College in Amherst, Massachusetts with an amazing financial aid package, which pretty much has full right scholarship, and I am proud to say that despite the hardships and incessant turns back and forth, I am going to be able to continue my education, hopefully pursuing a career in chemistry and biochemical sciences without having to stress about finances. And for that, I am incredibly grateful. I do have to say that I owe a huge, 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 huge portion of my success to Ms. Nicholson, who helped me and held my hand every step of the way. Ms. Nicholson always encouraged me when I cried in her office because I was stressed about college applications. And she waited with me patiently as we waited hours and hours in that little phone room with the music, waiting for financial aid offices to reply. And she always kept up with me and made sure that everything was up to date with the colleges. I owe it to my parents who supported me through every challenge, my sister, my friends who made researching for colleges extremely lighthearted, when for me it seemed like it was doomed. And finally, to my school, the S A H S, and to you guys who supported us all along the way. For all the amazing staff members and teachers that helped me and cheered me on. Sorry, as difficult as difficult in the news shows these past four years have been, it is an honor to have been part of your first graduating class. Thinking in hindsight now, I realize that a crucial part of explaining myself as an applicant has been shaped as my experience as being one of the founders and presidents of the D S A H S Model United Nations Club. The Model UN Club started as a bit of an ambitious dream between me and my friend Sophia Edelberg our freshman year, and we somehow managed to convince the administration to let us lead it, and in November twenty nineteen, we found a sponsor, which is Ms. Hernandez, and she's been an integral part of our success. And a team that started with twelve people now had thirty students this year against thirty-five schools in Florida, and we came out victorious, winning a grand majority of the awards. We had four best delegations, one outstanding delegation, and three honorable mentions this year. The D S A H S Model United Nations Club represented the school and the city of Aventura beautifully with impeccable decorum and dedication, and I could not be prouder of them as I am. I can't wait to see what is yet to come, and again, thank you for your repeated support. Now I have the privilege of presenting one of our best delegate recipients, Samuel Arroy, who will read his opening speech to you to show you just a little bit of what Model UN is all about. And having said that, Sam, you now have the floor for a minute.
It has been eight years since the United Nations General Assembly formulated the Sustainable Development Goal, yet little to no progress has been made to accomplish these crucial steps towards a more sustainable future, especially in the field of renewable, affordable, and modern energy. The Republic of Chad has taken revolutionary strides towards achieving increased access to clean energy and has placed complete priority over achieving the goal of diverse resource development through programs such as Scale Up Chad and the twenty thirteen Clean Energy Project. However, the delegation of Chad believes it's imperative for action to go beyond Chad's borders. In order to do so, we propose the implementation of the RPA Plan, which aims to repair the present damage, protect natural will be developed, and anticipate the growth of locations that will require energy in order to ensure that they are created in a sustainable manner. There are only seven years until twenty thirty, and if we, as the international community, cannot cooperate to achieve this goal of sustainability, then who can? Thank you.
So I was kind of a last-minute addition, so I don't have a a cool little introduction. But I am also one of the best delegate winners.
Oh, no, we're going to need your name, young man.
My name is Ethan Bazok. You guys want the address, too? Am I a public comment? So Samuel Arroy, who just spoke, by the way, that speech was fully his. That was originally written by him at that time. Did you write it there and then in committee? Or did you write it before? So he wrote it in committee. He wrote it, I think, a minute before he had to go up and speak. You know, this is not an easy sport. It's a very, very, very hard sport. Another thing about sports is he's a part of our volleyball team, and yesterday they won. They are currently undefeated in the county. Oh, and they won today again, so twice. I don't know how he does it. So now I'm going to steal the spotlight, and I'm going to deliver my speech. Thank you, Honorable Chair and fellow delegates. For centuries, the human race has been subversing to that cost, including food, shelter, security, and opportunity. Now, more than ever, uncertainty lurks behind those secrets, preying on their hopes and obstructing their desire for a better tomorrow. Compared to mankind's earliest pioneers, the migrants of today face the everlasting threat of genophobia, piracy, and trafficking, all man-made sins that continue to ravage the nomads of today. This committee's obligation is more than just providing migrants with food, more than just providing migrants with a place to sleep. This committee's responsibility is to provide migrants with the luxury that has not seen its place in migration since the days of the Roman Empire, the principles that is security. It is time that the freedom to migrate safely be declared a right, not a privilege. Let this inalienable right serve as an assurance to all those determined to improve their life, that as long as they bleed red and cry tears, they are guaranteed the liberty to move as they see fit. With the cooperation of the international community, the delegation of Uzbekistan looks forward to the safeguarding of migrant rights and the establishment of a comfortable and unhindered migration process. Thank you. I'm now turning it back to our wonderful principal, Dr. McKee. Take it away.
I'm definitely not going to say anything after those amazing presentations, so thank you all. We are so proud of our students, our future student as well. And for everyone in the community, the tremendous support, it's it's awesome. The Commissioners, our mayor, they're there frequently, our city manager, assistant city manager, a few of the parents are here in the audience, but it really is a special community, and we're grateful for you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKee and students. I I I feel like I I need to say that this is so exciting for us up here as we have our first graduating class this year. These are just a sample of the amazing students. You know, several of us worked for years in our prior terms to get the high school built. It was a long process of property acquisition and charter amendments and a whole bunch of stuff, charter meaning the school charter. It was a difficult process, but we dreamed about the day when we would have Aventura children K through twelve and graduating from high school. I will be privileged to be able to to speak at the commencement. And several of us, well, the majority of us have kids either in high school or college or both. We actually, I think, three of us have children at the University of Florida right now as we speak, but it's just incredibly exciting. You you are setting a wonderful example of the kind of accomplished students that we're going to turn out year after year after year, long after we're we're all gone, and I don't want I don't want to miss I don't want to I don't want to miss an opportunity to also say that we're working very hard here to we always want to have the best teachers, the best and the brightest, and we want them to come to Aventura, and we want them to stay in Aventura, so we actually have an initiative that is very close to coming to fruition where we're going to be able to provide luxury, not workforce, not affordable, luxury housing for the teachers that teach Aventura children. And it's going to be an amazing program where they can live in our city, and they can either walk, ride their bike, or take a freebie to school to educate our children every day, and that's an initiative. That's a very high priority for us, but we're we're super proud of you. Do you want to mention the play that's coming? April eleventh and twelfth, tell me if I get it wrong, seven PM at the Aventura Performing Arts Center. The students will be doing Chicago. Did I get that right? I'll be there. Everyone should be there. Tickets are affordable. Okay, we'll move on then to the consent agenda. Mr. Manager, any additions or deletions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Bloom, and Second Commissioner Joel. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Bloom.
Yes.
Commissioner Friedland.
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Marks.
Yes.
Commissioner Stern.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joel.
Yes.
And Mayor Weinberg.
Yes.
Ms. Hassan.
Item six, zoning hearings, quasi-judicial. Mr. City Attorney, can you give the procedures?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Please be advised that the following items on the commission's agenda, items six A and six B, are quasi-judicial in nature. If you wish to object or comment upon an item, please inform the mayor when public comments are requested. An opportunity for persons to speak on the items will be made available after the applicant and staff have made their presentations on the items. All testimony, including public testimony and evidence, will be made under oath or affirmation. Additionally, each person who gives testimony may be subject to cross-examination. If you refuse either to be cross-examined or to be sworn, your testimony will be given its due weight. The general public will not be permitted to cross-examine witnesses, but the public may request the commission to ask questions of staff or witnesses on their behalf. Persons representing organizations must present evidence of their authority to speak for the organization. Further details of the quasi-judicial procedure procedures may be obtained from the city clerk. Mr. Mayor, those are the procedures.
I'm sorry I missed that. Can you repeat that?
Sure.
Mayor? Yes.
Not because I have a conflict of interest, but just so there's no even appearance of a conflict of interest on this particular issue since the this proposal is and it's going to be built right next to my business, I I I'm going to recuse myself for this particular issue.
Understood. Madam Clerk, can you swear in anyone wishing to offer testimony?
Yes.
Six A and six B.
If you will be providing testimony on item six A or six B, I need you to stand up and raise your right hand and be sworn in at this time. This is for item six A or item six B. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God? Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, can you read the resolution for six A, please?
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Aventura, Florida, granting conditional use approval to allow the sale and service of alcoholic beverages at indoor cocktail bar lounge areas within restaurants established at the proposed Aventura Food Hall located at two seven 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 northeast one eighty-fifth street, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for approval, please? Commissioner Bloom, can I have a second? Vice Vice Mayor Joel. Community Development Director Kevin Klop, would you review the item, please?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Kevin Klop, Community Development Director. The item has been read into the record. And as you are aware, this is a proposal for a food hall. Twenty seven seventy-seven northeast one eighty-fifth street, essentially Miami Gardens Drive, right behind the Walgreens that is at Biscayne Boulevard and Miami Gardens Drive. The first request out of the two items before you is a conditional use request. The code has certain spacing requirements for alcoholic beverage establishments, and if they don't meet those spacing requirements, they have to come before you to ask for conditional approval in order to locate this. It is an allowed use in the zoning district, conditional approval in order to locate this. It isn't allowed use in the zoning district, but because of other establishments that are nearby, we request your approval for the alcoholic beverage part of the proposed project. I don't have a presentation myself. The applicant does have a presentation and a whole team of experts to answer your questions. So I will offer myself to answer any questions on this application, or I can allow the applicant to make their presentation at this time, or we could move on to the second item and then go through it. It's up to you, Mr. Mayor.
Why don't we have the applicant make a brief presentation, and we'll see if there's questions from the commission?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Brian Adler for the record, office at Bilsen-Sunberg, 1450 Brookle Avenue, Suite 2300. I'm joined here this evening with my colleague Lauren Kahn. We're also joined by several, several members of our development team. One is Elias Kababi and Leo Vasquez from Cabbie Holdings. Cabbie Holdings is the joint venture partner for Aventura Corporate Center LLP, which is the owner of the property. We're also joined by the architects from Architectonica, Maxine Lambert and Fidel Zibek, by Juan Espinoza from David Plummer and Associates, the traffic engineer, and by Rodrigo Bermudez from Fortin Levy Skiles, who is the civil engineer. We do have a presentation this evening, and I'm wondering if we, perfect, okay. So I wanna thank you for the opportunity to present this evening and to thank staff for their thorough review and working with us on this present, on the application. I mentioned that, that Cabbie Holdings is a joint venture partner of the, of the development. The Cabbie entities has been a part of the Aventura community for over two decades. You may recognize some of the properties that they've developed, the, some of the entities have developed. The Wells Fargo Building, which is the office building, also the park at Turnberry. Also, the Kababi family, they consider Aventura essentially their second home. Several of the family members actually own units and live and reside here part-time in Aventura. This is a very important project to the Kababi family. This property started as, as the vision of Hakobo Kababi, who was essentially the head down here of the Kababi entities. Many of you may recall Hakobo Kababi died here in Aventura at the age of 39. This property is very important to the family, essentially continuing Hakobo's legacy on this property. Elias Kababi is here. That's Hakobo's brother. Rosa Kababi was scheduled to come here. The day that we were confirmed to be on tonight's agenda, she bought, essentially wanted to know when this was gonna be so she can confirm her tickets. She did get delayed today, and as of this morning, I was on with her where she was trying desperately to get here today. So this is a very important project to them for many reasons, but this is part of their vision for the future. This, this property was presented to you before the January workshop. I think it was January 19th was our workshop. And we presented the concept before you at that hearing. And we do have some of the same team, many of the same members of the team here before you, so to answer any questions. So many of you are familiar with the property at 2777 Northeast 185th Street as the property behind the Walgreens and behind what is now the Wild Fork. So I know you're familiar with it. Just a few items on it. It is designated on the comp plan as business and office. It is zoned B2 for, on the city zoning map. So B2 allows properties to be developed up to 12 stories as of right or up to 20 stories as a conditional use. During the workshop, we presented that this property was actually approved and has a current approval for an office building, and I illustrated this at the last hearing. This is what that office building actually looks like, and what you can see is it's a, it's a 10-story, 120-foot office building with a six-story garage annex, and that is what's approved on here. But during the workshop, Cara Cronengold, who's been representing the Kababi family for many years, explained how the Kababis took a step back and looked at the property and said, "What do we want for this property? What do we envision on this property?" without saying, "Let's maximize every square foot that can be built on the property without going to the 12 stories." And what they came up with was a much different project than what is approved. What you see on the left side is, is a, is a chart of what was approved versus the right side, which is what they're seeking. So what was approved is an office building of 120,000 square feet. It actually also has another 2,900 square feet of retail, so it's actually 122,000, 10 stories with a six-story parking annex. The lower picture is showing what we're seeking, which is about 19,195 square feet of indoor or FAR area, which is about 16% of what was approved, and another 14,000, 15,000 of outdoor dining area, and what is essentially a three-story instead of a 10-story building. You can see between the two, two photos, this has a very different feel. The, the lower picture shows you what they're envisioning on the property today. Instead of two solid structures, it's essentially a three-story structure, but with open space landscaping within the ground floor and a much more open concept. Architectonica, the architects have taken the vision, and they've prepared several renderings, and so I'm just gonna go through them very quickly for you. This is the overall site plan, and again, it shows the Walgreens and the Wild Fork. I'm gonna go back to that slide. So what you can see, this is the north elevation, and while it's three stories, this is not a three-story solid structure. In working with staff, we worked through the facade of the original plans that we provided. And so when we came to, to the workshop, we already had modified a lot from what we originally presented. But you can see, it really represents much more greens, green area, green space, landscaping both inside and outside. So within the site, there's actually landscaping, et cetera, that, that goes from the ground and through spaces through, through the, through the, through the top. So when you can see that all represented here, a natural, very aesthetically pleasing color palette and really trying to accent the site. And this shows how some of the open air and the landscaping within. So again, this is a much different feel than what was there. One of, oh, sorry. I'm gonna go back to this slide. So in order to achieve the development that's reflecting the plan, there's a few items that we're seeking. One is a conditional use approval. As, as Mr. Klop noted, that when you're seeking certain uses, they have to, they're permitted, but if they're spaced a certain distance from other uses, we come forward with a conditional use approval. There are, it's hard to go 2,500 feet in the City of Aventura and not hit a religious facility or a 1,500 feet from another alcohol beverage establishment. So we are within certain distances. We are within 2,500 feet, and actually, the list that you see, when the code says 1,500 from other establishments that serve alcohol or 2,500 from religious facilities. When you do the liquor survey, you add 500. So actually, the list shows what's within 3,000 for religious facilities and within 2,000 of other establishments. There are two religious facilities. One is the Lubovitch, which is up the block, which we, we did reach out to. I know Rabbi Rosenfeld, and we reached out to let him know that this was coming. And the other one is, is a, is a church that meets within the courtyard Marriott, sometimes on Sundays. We don't generally have competing hours for when a lot of the users are gonna be there. Other uses that are within that, the 1,500 are Publix, Walgreens, Fresh Market, a gas station, because they do serve alcoholic beverages, and then, or they sell alcoholic beverages, and then some restaurants. So what we're seeking is a conditional use approval. Now, I know you're familiar with some of the conditional use approvals that come forward to the city, because the mall, for example, I've represented certain users that go in the mall where they come for an individual conditional use approval. In this case, we are seeking, a mall is retail with the establishments, our restaurants are ancillary. In this case, the dining and restaurant venues are the use. It is the heart of the use that we're seeking. And the way the code is written, if you have 150 indoor seats and 2,500 square feet of space, then you can have the bar and cocktail lounge. But we're focusing on both indoor and outdoor spaces. So the way that it's written, the very nature of our use being indoor and outdoor, not having as much of a 2,500 feet, we don't meet it for all of our uses. In order to obtain the tenants that they're seeking on the site, they wanna have the approval so that the tenants are comfortable entering into the lease, not entering into it, and then coming back for a hearing. So we are seeking a, an exception for, kind of an exception for the site for the uses. The other, the other, and I'm gonna go back to the, the other items we're seeking before you, and I guess, should we address the variances, which is 6B, or do you want me to do that after? Because they kind of flow together, so.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the other items we're seeking are, are variances. So as you can see, this is an odd-shaped lot. Additionally, when the, when the property was originally acquired, the property to the east on Miami Gardens Drive, which you know is the gross property or the Merco property, that was actually zoned commercial. Once it got rezoned to residential, we have a distance under your code. Commercial properties adjacent to residential have a one-foot-for-two-foot distance requirement for the first 100 feet. So that actually limited what can go on that property. What we've done is, and is on our third floor, we are, we are meeting that on the part that's adjacent to the commercial, but it actually limits what can go on the property. So because of that and this L shape, we're, we are seeking certain variances, but one of the things you look at is whether there's something unique about the property that creates a hardship and, and this, and we, we view this as meeting that requirement. So the first variance is for lot coverage. The city code permits 40%, we're at 42.64%. We are not seeking an increase. It's a marginal increase. We're not seeking it to maximize development. It is seeking it for the garage area that's essentially going up. So even though the ground floor is very open and has that open feel, and the ground floor, if you look at the indoor area, has much less than 40% of lot coverage. Overall, it's 42.64%, because what they're doing is they're extending it for the garage level going up, so that in order not to go up in height, and also to bring the building, which goes to the second variance, which is the setback variance, in order not to bring the build, in order to bring the building closer to the street, which is much more in line with the urban form and urban design, but also because of the nature of, of this type of development where it's open air and seating, what it's doing is creating more shade and more, and protection from the elements. So they're actually seeking a variance to go 10 feet instead of 20 feet from the side. The indoor areas, 100% respect the 20 feet. That is, that is required by code. It's the, the ground floor is 25 feet up, so it's from 25 feet up that they're looking for the garage to go 10 feet over on and closer to the setbacks. So both of those go together. Again, this could be a property, if, if they were maximizing the development on the property, they could actually go to, to two, I think about 270,000 square feet of FAR if they were to seek the maximum and conditional use approval, much less of what they're seeking. Now, the other item before you is a phase two of this property. That's what you see in red. You may recall during the workshop, we were before the commission, and certain comments and questions arose with regard to parking. We were gonna seek a, utilizing a shared parking. I'm pleased to be before you with meeting, not only meeting, but exceeding the parking. We've reduced the size of what's provided, so that we're providing where 113 spaces is required. We are providing 115, so we, we do meet the code without any reduction. What phase two represents is the wish list. If we can get off-site parking, and we're able to get parking that would accommodate the future use, what we're seeking is approval to, that if we do get the parking and we meet the code, to allow us to seek the, the approval for the utilization of that, of that area. That would only be used if we, if we secure that, that off-site parking, and we present that securing of that parking to the, to the, to the city staff. Again, we are not seeking, I think we had submitted as part of the workshop, our traffic engineer had reviewed with regard to ride sharing, transit, pedestrian, because it's within walking distance, the ability that could support actually, I think even a 35% reduction. We have scrapped that. We are 100% meeting the parking that's on site and reduce the use to accommodate that. So this is a fraction of the size of what is approved on the site today. Much more in line, this is something that we view as gonna be a benefit to those living around there and to the, to the members of the Aventura community. And again, an important development to the Kababi family. We know that you may have some questions, so I'm here to, I'm here with, again, our professional staff to answer any questions you have, and I thank you for your time tonight, and I don't know if you wanna, and there are some modifications, if I may, to the conditions, so I'm gonna have Mr. Klop, I'm gonna ask Mr. Klop if he, if he can address those as well.
Thank you.
Just for the record, the clarifications that Mr. Adler mentioned, there are conditions listed in the resolution and the staff report. We recognize that some of the language could use some improvement. So just for the record, number five would read, "Each individual restaurant shall obtain an alcoholic beverage license from the state of Florida and begin sales and service of alcoholic beverages within 12 months of the alcoholic beverage license zoning approval granted by the city administration for that restaurant, or such approval shall be deemed null and void." Just for explanation, any alcohol beverage establishment, regardless of whether they have to come to the city commission or not, does have to come to our department for a zoning approval before they can go to the state. So what this condition is saying is, if they come to us and they get that approval, they have to use that approval within a year or it goes away. We typically put that timeframe on them anyways. We just wanted it in the resolution for clarity because there's multiple establishments at this location as proposed. The other condition that would be slightly clarified is number eight, which would now read, "If the city manager determines a particular tenant has created and/or is creating a nuisance, the city manager may request that the conditional use approval, as it relates to that particular tenant, could be brought to the city commission for review." So that's basically what we've said in other situations like this, but because, again, of the multiple tenants, we wanted it to be clear that this would be for if one, we're creating a problem, not the whole development. So with those clarifications, you've heard the presentation. I'm available for any questions, as would the applicant be.
Any commission question or comment? Commissioner Stern?
Brian, I apologize. You lost me when you said phase two, if we obtain parking. I just didn't grasp that. If you could just maybe re, go over that again, because I just, you lost me.
So absolutely, and thank you. I know it was going quickly because I know you have a full audience, and I like when there's a full audience, and when they asked everyone to stand up for who's gonna speak, and I saw no one stand up, it, it pleased me, so I was trying to go quickly for you. So what we, during the, during the workshop, what we had presented was a more intense development. The more intense development was actually what we're calling phase two on the rooftop. That was where we were potentially gonna be requiring more parking and using the ride sharing and reductions that are supported by the, by the traffic analysis. During the workshop, the commission expressed concerns regarding that ride sharing. So what we did is we went back and we said, okay, how can we address the commission? One, one option is going up a level, but we feel that that, that is not in the interest of the project. It would change the whole feel, change everything with regard to the project. So what we did is, we reduced some of the restaurant space and the, and the, on the rooftop, and eliminated a second restaurant space and reduced it by, I think, 3,000 exterior and like 14 or 1700 interior. I have the exact numbers of one. So we've now, without utilizing any parking reduction, what is presented as phase one is meeting the code entirely. There are, as part of the, sorry, as part of the plans that there are two additional pages. If I can have the presentation up one more time. So what we're calling in red, what we've done is, what we're calling phase two is the wish list. So the city code allows you to have off-site parking to satisfy your requirements if that off-site parking is not the required parking of some other use. So what we wanted to do is have the ability that if, in the event we are able to find off-site parking, that would be, that would satisfy the parking requirements under the code for that additional phase, and upon presenting satisfactory proof of that onsite parking to the city, that we would be approved to actually utilize that additional space. So we would have to find parking that would, that would accommodate what we're calling phase two. So phase, there will still be under phase one, a rooftop restaurant with outdoor seating. What we've eliminated is a substantial portion of that area that if we are able to find and accommodate off-site, it is, it is their, their desire to find that. Obviously, there's limited space, et cetera. So if we can find it, that would be perfect, and they'd have the ability to have off-site parking and, and we'd have to illustrate to the city. to have off-site parking and, and we'd have to illustrate to the city how we're gonna comply, whether it's valet, off-site, off-site parking. And if we are able to obtain that, then it would be, then we would be able to, to have a tenant for that space. If not, we cannot utilize that. We cannot build out what is Phase Two. And it's delineated on the plans, and this is just showing you different areas of where it would be. So, perfect, thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Freedland.
So I might be able to add a little information. I had a long conversation with Kevin Klop and the city manager today. It's my understanding that for Phase Two, the developer would have to kind of, you know, establish that there would be long-term, long-term off-site parking. And I think the city, I think the idea of the rooftop is an exceptional idea. I think that's something beneficial, so I hope that is something you're able to manage and work out. I wanted to just explain that to you. That's why I understood the phases. But in addition, I understood that you're asking that if we come to accept that you will provide information of a long-term parking solution, you might be able to just work with this, the administration and the staff, rather than have to come before the entire commission again.
So the conditional use approval and variances that you would, that are before you, essentially would stay the same, because the structure stays the same and it's the distance requirement. The idea would be that what we're presenting tonight meets, like Phase One meets the parking onsite. What it is, is Phase Two does not. And so, under the code, if we provide parking within a certain distance, then, and then it satisfies it and it meets it. So yes, that, that is essentially, it would be, it would be approving both, you know, both, and both are on the, on the plans. One, I think there's different actually plan sheets at the end of the plan sets that show what Phase Two would be.
Thank you.
Any other commission comment or questions? Let me say that it's a beautiful project. Actually, since tonight, I, I have no idea why, but tonight we seem to have more people than usual. It's great for people to see how, because I, I can't tell you how many times I get an email that says, "Why are you letting the developer build? We have enough traffic, we have enough." So this is a good example of where you have a client that owns property. He has a right to build. We up here cannot say, "You can't build. Enough is enough, we've decided you can't build." But what we try to do is work with developers to get a better project. Now, you have the right, obviously, to build something of much more square footage than what this project is. You have a project already approved with what, four times the square footage?
I think almost six.
Almost six times the square footage, which would not be such a great project for Aventura. Instead, we give a little, we get a little. It's a much nicer project. We, we, we want Aventura to be a dining destination. We want people to come here to eat good food, and that's happening all over the city. So this is a, a value added. My, my concern is what was already been somewhat, I'm somewhat echoing what I've heard. So my concern would be that you get an agreement for off-site parking. So you go ahead and do that wish list Phase Two build-out, and for whatever reason, you end up, that contract gets invalidated or voided, or someone's in breach, or you end up litigating it, and that parking situation falls through. So there has to be some mechanism where the city is protected that, without the parking, you don't get the Phase Two. So it needs, and I don't know the answer, but it needs to be negotiated in such a way that you can't have one without the other, even moving forward after the build-out. That would be, we need that measure of protection, so that we're not caught in a situation where you're doing what you're doing and there is not enough parking there. We don't want to be in that situation.
And I think that if, if approved this evening, that is something when we, if, if we, and, and it is something they do want. It's part of, it really, I think, also helps, you know, makes the project a nicer project. Something they desperately want. If they cannot locate it, it cannot come to fruition. If they can locate it, it's gotta, it, it, there are things that we can work out with staff to provide the insure, to the insurance assurances to the city. This is a similar provision Miami Dade County has with regard to off-site parking, and there are mechanisms that are in place that, that, that we can work with the staff to, to ensure that, that there's compliance.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Freedland.
I did just wanna let the audience know, since we do have a large audience. I don't know if Mr. Adler explained. This is a food hall entertainment venue that the developer already owns their land. They have the right to build anything within the limits that we know. But this should be an exciting new addition to our city with new food restaurants, making Aventura more of a foodie situation kind of a place. If anyone's been, I think in the Momo area, there's a place called Citadel, which I think it's most similar to, unique, individual, independently-owned little restaurants with music and entertainment, and that is my understanding of what they're looking to bring to the city. So thank you. It looks like it'll be a nice addition to us.
I haven't left Aventura in eight years, so I don't know what you're talking about, but it sounds good.
I'll be coming more often.
Don't have to leave Aventura as much.
If there's, if there's no more commission comment, then I will open it up for public comment. If anyone wants to speak on this item, you're more than welcome to come forward. You have up to three minutes on this item. If that's the case, come forward now. If not, we will close it, public comment, and roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bloom?
Yes.
Commissioner Freedland?
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz is absent. Vice Mayor Joel?
Yes.
Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to 6B. Can you read the resolution, Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Aventura, Florida, granting variances from Section 31-144(c)(5)D of the city's land development regulations to permit a side yard setback of ten feet along the north and south property lines, where setbacks of twenty feet are required by code, and from Section 31-144(c)(5)A2 to permit an increase in the lot coverage to allow forty-two point sixty-four percent coverage, where forty percent is permitted for the property located at 2777 Northeast 185 Street. I'm providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve, please. Commissioner Bloom, second. Commissioner Stern. Kevin Klop, would you like to take this?
Very briefly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant has already spoken of this. The standard for variances is that a hardship be established. We agree with the hardship that the applicant has presented, and staff recommends favorably.
Thank you. I don't think there's much you need to repeat, but feel free.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Brian Adler, office at Bills and Summer, 1450 Brickell Avenue. I just have to adopt my presentation from the conditional use into this item, if I may.
So adopted.
Thank you very much.
Commission comment? Seeing none. Open it up for public comment. Seeing none. Close it, and roll call vote.
Commissioner Freedland?
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz is absent. Commissioner Bloom?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joel?
Yes.
And Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you. Items. Welcome back, Commissioner Cruz. Were you at Mo's? Item seven, ordinances first reading. Madam Clerk, can you read this ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Aventura, Florida, amending Chapter Two Administration, Article Three Advisory Boards of the City of Aventura Code of Ordinances to provide more uniformity among advisory board regulations, providing for severalability, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Stern, a second, please. Commissioner Bloom? Mr. Manager, you want to review this for us?
Thank you, Mayor. At a recent workshop, we discussed unifying and making it more uniform the several community advisory boards that we have in Aventura. We have the Community Services Advisory Board, Arts and Cultural Center Advisory Board, Arts and Public Places Advisory Board, the Don索for Aventura High School Advisory Board. And to make it a little bit easier, when we have to select and go out to find members to serve on those boards, it's something to make it a little more uniform and streamlined.
Okay, any questions or comments from the commission? Seeing none, I'll open it up for public comment. On this particular issue, seeing none, we'll close it, and we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Dr. Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloom?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Freedland?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joel?
Yes.
And Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, there are no second reading ordinances. Moving to item nine, resolutions. Nine A was removed, so I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution for nine B.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Aventura, Florida, awarding a bid contract for bid number twenty-three dash zero-two dash twenty-seven dash three Founder's Park South facility to Bajar Construction at the bid price of one million three hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars, authorizing the city manager to execute the associated contract, providing for implementation, providing for the appropriation and allocation of funds for said bid award, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve? Commissioner Stern, can I have a second? Commissioner Bloom? Oh, sorry, that was Commissioner Cruz. Does any commissioner have any comments? No, okay. So I think I have a couple, a few comments, because I think this was an item, this subject last month, had a lot of speakers, which, once again, everyone will have an opportunity, but I think I should set the stage, because there were many things that were said that were not entirely accurate. So I think I owe it to this commission and prior commissions to, to set the record straight a little bit. The commission always seeks to find solutions for the betterment of our community, but we have to do it for the community as a whole. It took us years, as you heard earlier, to get a school. We just found a way to get an outdoor basketball court again. We've worked very hard to get additional open spaces. We're working hard to get housing for our teachers and our police. If you saw the Miami Herald article last week, you know that every city is struggling with demand for recreational activities, in particular pickleball, if you saw the article. Our tennis program is bursting at the seams. We only have three courts. There are people like me that are fortunate. I only need to take an elevator to the third floor of my condominium building, and I have all the pickleball and all the tennis that I want. But many people are not that fortunate, and many parents can't afford to give their kids tennis lessons, except in the recreational programming that, that we provide. So way back before the majority of us were even on the commission, I wasn't here. This goes back over a year. The manager and the director of community services looked for funding, and they looked for a location for tennis and pickleball. They knew that no location was perfect. Wherever they chose, the people who live in that neighborhood would be coming to City Hall to advocate for a different location. That's just the way it works. It's called NIMBY, not in my backyard. It happens every time. When we selected the site for the high school, the people who live on 213th said, "Don't build a high school there." No matter where we went, no matter where we go, this is just natural, right? People advocate for what matters most to them. We're, we don't have that luxury. Personally, I don't like the location that's been selected, because I live there. I don't need it. But again, it's not about me, and it's not about my neighbors. It's about the entire city. So there's not a single person up here that advocated for that location, but it was explained to us why that's the only location that works. So our job is to, to seek the best solution. It's important to note that, as far back, I did the research, because I do my own research, April 5th of last year, that's a year ago. The gardening community was represented right here in this room to speak about their desires. They were here. April 13th of last year, a year ago, the community services director and the city manager met with fifteen members of the gardening community to discuss this issue. So please, when you speak, please don't tell us, because factually it's wrong. Don't tell us this was a last-minute decision. Don't tell us it was secretive. Don't tell us it was done without notice, because the facts show that that's just not the case, and that's not the way we operate. So having said that, everyone will get up to three minutes to speak. It'd be great if you don't repeat what was already said. As I said last time, and the city attorney will give more instructions, but there's no clapping, there's no booing, there's no outbursts, and there's no personal attacks, direct remarks to the entire commission. We all live here, we all need to be respectful. Mr. City Attorney, you want to give more instructions?
I'm not sure there's much else I can add, except, I guess, the following, that, you know, technically, the item that's in front of the commission right now is just whether or not to approve this construction contract. It's not to get into sort of a review of what's been done in the past in terms of the gardens and the location. But in speaking to the chair, the presiding officer, the mayor, he said that he's willing to hear comments with respect to the, the park in general. So if you make comments about the park in general, whether it's about the pickleball courts or the moving of the gardens, you can make it during this part of the meeting. If you do that, that means when we get to public comment at the very end, you've already had your say, so you won't be able to make it again at the end of the meeting. But like I say, in, you know, the reality is, what, what's in front of the commission right now is whether or not to approve this contractor, not whether or not you should relocate, you know, the gardens, and whether or not this is the appropriate site for the pickleball and tennis courts.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Okay, Madam Clerk, you ready with the three-minute timer? Okay, so if you want to speak on this issue respectfully, I need your name and your address. Okay, let's wait one minute for it to, I want, I want to be able to hear you, so wait for it to quiet down.
And Mayor, if we could just make sure that when people are stating their name and address for the record, that they don't speed through it, because we, we want to make sure we have your, your name and address.
Name and your address, clearly. Let's respect the speakers and have the corpsman here. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Irene Lipoff. I live at thirty-seven forty-eight Northeast 209 Terrace in Golden Point. I have lived in Aventura for twenty-eight years before you were a city, and I am addressing the whole commission, including Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and I am speaking on behalf of going forward with this contract. Many buses and freebie cars are around our community, and I notice a lot of older Aventura residents use these things, which is great. But there are a bunch of us between sixty-five and eighty who would like to play pickleball. And for many of us who play tennis, we are unable to play tennis anymore and are able to play pickleball. So I would like to speak, to go ahead with this contract. I think it will be beneficial for our city. I also think it will be beneficial, we saw these high school kids. I have noticed that young people are also playing pickleball, and just this weekend... And just this weekend, there were two amateurs who played against two professionals on national TV, including Seth Fine, who used to live in Aventura, a person who runs a pickleball company not in Aventura. But what it was saying to me is that people of all ages will enjoy pickleball. And so as a resident of our community, I would like to see something happen that will benefit a different group of people, because we have a school, we're looking to do other things. We have lots of facilities and cars and buses for older people who don't drive. This would be a boom for people who want to play pickleball. We are very anxious for this to happen in our community. It is something that will be positive in terms of public relations for our community, and therefore I ask you as a long-term Aventura resident to please go forward with this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, name and address, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Karen Decou. I live at two one zero five five Yacht Club Drive in Aventura. It's the point of Aventura. I also am speaking in favor of having pickleball in our community. As I wrote, Mayor Weinberg, we're the city of excellence, but we are lagging behind many communities in Florida, not just South Florida, in all of Florida. All communities are putting in pickleball courts for their community. It is also very beneficial across generational lines. I can play with my grandchildren. I can play with my children. The younger people are playing it as well as the older people. Our community is diverse, and we're not, we're very lagging in athletic activities that we offer our our community. We have a cultural center. We have like the world-class mall that everybody goes to. We need to have pickleball. We can't be a city of excellence without the number-one fastest-growing sport in the world. So I urge you to go forward with this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, name and address, please.
Hi, Michael Yavner, two one three seven six Marina Cove Circle. I've been a resident of Aventura since nineteen ninety-six. I want to thank you for continuing the great tradition of keeping us the city of excellence. Both of my kids are in school in Aventura. My daughter's in the first graduating class as well. I was on the Community Services Advisory Board at one time. I currently serve on the Don Sofor Aventura High School Board. So I think the commitment to excellence, you guys do a great job, as you've already stated, and the two fine ladies before me stated, pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America. Eighteen to fifty-four is the largest demographic now for that. I think that the pickleball courts are important. I think it'll be a great addition to the community. They're easy to maintain. It's a low-cost addition. I think it'll benefit a lot more people than what's currently the purposeful use of the park. And I'd like to thank you for your time and for moving it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, name and address, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Alicia Bonvicini. I live at three zero two nine Northeast one hundred and eighty-eighth Street. I've been actively involved with this cooperative effort to protect the park for a year now. And I was at that unofficial meeting that you referred to. A new design was mentioned, an opportunity to surrendering was offered, the word compromise was uttered, but there was no agreement on anything, because a handful of gardeners cannot decide the fate of an entire city. Thunder Sparks Out, the small, quiet green pocket park that has become, despite the detraction of those who support this project, an area of gathering for the community, a place of respite from the hectic pace of Aventura and life itself. This wonderful little green park that fosters connection and benefits the residents' mental health is a risk of becoming an open-air sports facility. We understand that pickleball is popular, but it's quite radical in twenty-twenty-three to destroy a paved green park the residents love solely to erect a sports facility. Very noisy and controversial ones, to be precise, because we all know pickleball is very noisy. If city officials had not so quietly approved all the previous steps of this project, they would have heard from the residents themselves that this park is not the right location for the sports courts. If they listened to those who went to the commission meetings month after month, wrote emails and begged them to find a better location, they would have discovered quickly the locals are appalled by the decision of paving a green park for sports courts. And if more residents had been alerted in a timely fashion about this plan, maybe we would not be here tonight. Shrinking green spaces that are vital to people's mental and physical well-being, increased traffic, long-term construction, out-of-control noise, limited parking, all these issues have concerned many in our community. Where sound impact studies, environmental impact studies, and traffic impact studies even conducted, this is not the right location. Thunder Sparks Out is loved and used by more Aventura residents than the city commissioners and the mayor want to admit. We are begging you again to reconsider this decision and find another location. Listen to us. We're feeling unheard and not taken as seriously as we should. Our collective efforts have been focused on protecting this park as a whole, not just the community garden, as some like to say, in order to minimize our effort, because it is the park itself that will cease to exist, as we know it, once the green area will be dominated by these big, bulky, noisy sports courts, and the park belongs to all the residents. We're hoping that the commissioners tonight will pivot, realizing that this project will bring more edicts than good. Aventura historically has been a city of retirees, but more and more young families are moving here. This demographic pays strong attention to environmental protection, connection with nature, and mental health issues. The project of bringing pickleball and tennis courts to Thunder Sparks Out is already alienating those residents. And even those who are not necessarily environmentalists or activists at heart do care about their property value, about their property value being impacted by this project. And all these people vote. Please, we beg you one more time, reconsider this project and find another location.
Thank you. And no clapping, please. You, excuse me, excuse me. We have rules of decorum. Also, I know it was not intentional, but for the remaining speakers, please try not to yell. Thank you.
Mayor, if I if I could, may I, about the rules of decorum, so the the city passed a resolution in nineteen ninety-six. It gives the mayor the authority to maintain decorum at at public meetings. And the mayor's already advised you, there's no clapping, there's no booing, there's no applause. So if if you don't comply with the with the mayor's edict, you can be removed from the meeting.
Name and address, please. Thank you.
Harriet Brodmann, two one oh five oh Northeast Thirty-Eighth Avenue, apartment thirty-one oh one, Aventura. I've lived in Aventura for over twenty-five, almost thirty years, and I am definitely for this resolution. What increases the value of your condo on the average of twenty-five hundred dollars? What increases the value of your condo more than buying one floor higher? Condos may be for older people, but they are more active than any age group in our society. And what is their favorite sport? Pickleball! You all saw the front page of the paper. And that says it all. I will be short and sweet, and I'm definitely for this resolution. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Hi. Name and address, please.
My name is Sean Moss, three 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 zero Northeast one ninety-first Street. The most disappointing thing about all of this is I'm just learning that this is how local government works today. I blame only me. I guess I was just thought that things were supposed to be different. I just thought that at this local level, things were supposed to actually work. People actually talked to each other, conversed, compromised, spoke to each other as equals. I thought this was the most, I thought the most contentious debates we had in Aventura was whether you were a mo or bagel coat. And for the record, I'm a loyal mo and have been since my grandparents came as Rascal House refugees. My myself, like many others, have spoken and realized that we have not been paying attention, so distracted by the drama of national politics, we have ignored what is going on in our own backyards. I thought these things only happened in higher up, but I see it starts right here. Where's accountability of citizens? Who's who here is watching over us? Where's where? There was not one noise, traffic, and from what we can see, any extensive environmental impact study done. While you may have skated the legalities of needing them, the citizens that voted for you deserve to feel confident that you are sure that you understand what is about to be taken away from them. How is it going to impact the lives of those who live here? If I am wrong, please show me the reports. But could you honestly say that that was responsible? No effort or for even a minimal mental health study is take was was taken for taking after taking away a green space or a post check to see if the citizens really wanted it? With Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, email, and a text messaging system, you didn't think us worthy enough to even try to check? As if we weren't as if we weren't to be counted? Is this how things are always done here? Are we just handing out permits like promotional coffee mugs? According to the U.S. Pickleball Court Pickleball Association online, only eight percent of of pickleball players are under the age of thirty-five. Are you even sure that this city will want this? Are you handing the next generation of government of government a bill that we will need to rectify and put back our green spaces that we long for? Open parks are an assumed amenity in a city, not one that's requested. Are you sure you know what you're doing? To the pickleball players present, while you may have been misled to believe otherwise, myself and the rest of this group believe that the eight percent of the pickleball players under thirty-five and the ninety-two percent of the rest of you deserve ample courts in our neighborhood, but firmly believe that there is enough room in the park across the street and many other areas that have not been properly explored. There is there is no reason why you have to destroy something one people love for something other people love. I have been told by players of pickleball court that it's supposed to bring a sport that brings people together. Well, not here. It's tearing this community apart. You deserve a place where you could play and be welcome with open arms by your neighbors, not scoffed with dirty looks, harassed with feelings of intention. Ask your leaders to find you a better home. You just need to think, they just need to think more out of the box, and we're certainly here to help. There are plenty of locations where it will not take away from our green spaces or devalue a people's property.
No, I'm sorry. Everyone gets three minutes. You can speak for three minutes. I'm sorry. We'll help you through it. Don't worry.
Hi, my name is Rachel Moss. I live in thirty-three thirty Northeast one hundred and ninety-first Street in Aventura. We have received messages on IG from people thanking us for letting them know what is going on, because they were about to buy in the building next door. This is where and how you want to make your home. They have, but you can find the place very close by where you will feel very welcome amongst like-minded others. My wife and I moved to New York from here from New York City, where we were both raised, but wanted to raise our twins in a place more open, where they could have more room to run around, where people weren't so on top of each other. We're immediately we were immediately drawn to both Founders Park North and Found- and South as the perfect place for our children to have room. It is not, wait, this isn't Not in My Backyard Campaign. It is a Not on My Backyard Campaign. We and our children live in condos with no backyards to play in. These parks serve as our backyards and retreats and a place where people of all ages and demographics come to heal. And you want to take that away from us? These are not just actions of a progressive cities. Don't make us some fake plastic suburb built to support shopping malls. This is will not attract younger demographics. I understand that an investment has been made already, but don't destroy this until you fully understand what you are doing. At the very least, take a pause. Do this right, the right way for the whole community. Loud so says, "Nature does not hurry, yet everything is accomplished." Take a moment. You can make this work for everyone, and you can be the political heroes. We need to be here in our community garden. Thank you.
You're you're public speaking. You did very, very well. Also, I have twins as well. Thank you for speaking. Hi, name and address, please.
My name is Tova Itzak. My address is one hundred eighty twenty-one Biscayne Boulevard. I'm here on behalf of many of my senior friends and other disabled city residents who, like me, frequent the park daily to get fresh air, relax, meditate, and enjoy the peace and quiet of the park. Changing the park into a sport venue is a favor for sports fans is hurting us seniors and quiet seekers. Don't we deserve a small place to call our park? Kids have their playgrounds in the North Park and Peace Park and Waterway Park. Sports fans have their tennis, basketball, baseball, football, soccer at North Park, and now they're getting a new, brand-new baseball field at Waterway Parks. Why can't pickleball be built there? Might be other issues for building it other places, but if there's a will, there's a way. So sport fans and kids have their special parks where they where are we, the seniors, the disabled, going to go to enjoy peace and quiet? All we want is to keep the peaceful, small, green park, South Park, South Park. Just remember, everybody grows old sooner or later, and will want or need a quiet place to relax. Why uproot and destroy a perfectly green park? Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Michael Campagna. Address is three four four zero Northeast one hundred ninety-second Street in the Southview Condominiums. I'd like to say a few words, if I could, about the merits of the design of Founders Park South in its current format, which I consider to be a truly beautiful and meaningful place in our city. And we're hearing a lot about the need for different activities and the need for different things to do. And I'd like to draw the attention of the need for meaning, for meaningful places. Many of us have spent time in great cities outside of Miami, including New York, where many of us have have lived and or come from. And it's always interesting how there's a sense of pride when people speak about being from New York and why that is, and why people like myself who were born in Hollywood and raised in the suburbs of Fort Lauderdale, why there's a certain emptiness in saying, and a certain jealousy, quite frankly, when I was growing up and saying, yeah, I'm from, you know, Cooper City or Davie. And what's the difference? And why? Why is it better to be from Brooklyn or Manhattan or pick your great city, Amsterdam or Venice? It's because there are meaningful places. There are places that mean things to people. There's connectivity. There are things that are intentionally designed and that have intentional functions. So I digress. I believe Founders Park South is was an intentional design and quite an incredible one. And I have to say, I don't know the history of it, but I give credit to those who were involved. Because if you look at it and you look at the details of that park and you look at the circle and what it represents and how it ties the water to the city, and there's a circle there, and what does that circle represent? And why did they build a circle? I would love to hear the history, but I have a reading on it, just from an amateur interest in public spaces. And I believe that the designers of that circle and Founders Park South in general were trying to draw our attention to something that was very sacred in that space, in that circle. We know the symbolism of circles. And I think they were telling us, that's where your soul is. That's where the soul of Aventura is, right there, in that circle, around those pavers that highlight the ocean, leading to the city and the circle there. And the designers did that, and then they gave it to us, and they said, now you guys do what you want. And then you did a beautiful thing. I arrived in two thousand and fifteen, and when I saw that the garden, I said, this is a special place. This is a place where people are forward-thinking, that they're creating meaning, and that I'm proud to raise my family. My time is up. Founders Park South is beautiful. Let's let's look at really what it means to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. Name and address, please.
And I live in Northeast one hundred ninety-first Street in Aventura Marina, too. And I just want to say that we really like this beautiful green park, because there is the only park where you can enjoy with nature, and it's really quiet. I understand that many people would like to use pickleballs or tennis courts for socializing and to spend some time to each other, but from the other side, so many people of different age enjoying this small park in the same, you know, on the same side. So I really hope that maybe something miracle will happen and you change the mind and you can find another place to build some courts. Because this green, beautiful, small park, the only spot where we can really enjoy. Also, I have two children who are in Aces. My the other concern, I think that there is a huge echo My, the, my, the other concern, I think that there is a huge echo and during the school hours, it's going to be very loud. And uh, all those sounds will distract the AC students a lot because it's going to be from the morning to the evening and it's going to be super loud. So I'm kindly asking you if it's possible to find another place for pickleballs, pickleball courts, whatever. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi, name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Marina Gulav and I live at thirty-three thirty Northeast one hundred ninety Street. And we moved to Florida um, not too long ago and we were very excited to move in this area, in this city. And we love it and we also, we have three kids that we like to go for a walk and we love the gardening over there, which is, we were very surprised that the Florida had because we moved from the Washington State and over there, everybody's gardening, everybody have their little gardens. So we were excited to do that here in Florida as well. And my kids and I, we love to go there and just enjoying the gardening and peaceful time when it's super quiet, not a lot of traffic over there, not a lot of cars that we can go for a walk with my kids and I'm not scared that somebody's gonna, you know, take them off from, from the street. And my concern is that if there's going to be more tennis courts, that I'm more scared for the kids to be walking over there because the traffic is going to be super heavy over there. And I see that there's a lot more tennis courts in all of the parks that people can go and enjoy. And then also, like you said, a many condos, they have the tennis courts, a lot of gyms have the tennis courts, you know, so taking away something that Florida doesn't have a lot of gardening is my concern and also the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, name and address, please.
My name is Siu Wong, three one one five Northeast one eighty-fourth Street, forty-three oh one Aventura, Florida. As a proud Aventura resident, I love our city of excellence. I'm here tonight as you, the commissioners, to preserve our beloved little pocket park, Founder's Park South. Toddlers often take their first steps here, youngsters learn to ride their bicycles and families enjoy picnics under the shady trees. Some children experience their first lesson on insect and plant. This is a place where you see teenagers are actually communicating with each other, not on electronics. We need this space. So many working people, for so many working people, this is the only place they could come for mini vacation. For some idly, this is the place to relax, perhaps rehab themselves. For some, this is the closest place they could be near the nature. The Serion Spodge is a park where friends, neighbors connect with each other and with nature. Here we overcome some of our hardships, here we heal our wounds. We should not destroy something our local residents enjoy. Group people would like, let activities should be equally important to other sporty activities. We are not here to against pickleball court in our city. I think it's a wonderful idea, we have other parks. We can spread these wells of pickleball court and tennis court amongst other parks, veterans, waterways and the north. I want our commissioner to consider that. The round, as physical health and meta, mental health are equally important to all of our Aventura residents. This Aventura's hidden treasure is important to the wellness of all of us. The round circle of Founder's Park, the gentleman mentioned, he's reminding me, this should bring us together, not set us apart. Good, a good city decision should bring group of people together, not to set group people against the other group. I would like to believe as a city of excellence, a green city with effort. If we want to find harmony, we will find a way to achieve that. I hope we can build consensus to accommodate all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, name and address, please.
Andrew Kentardi, thirty-three thirty Northeast one ninetieth Street, Aventura Marina two. Thank you very much to Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, the entire commission, um, city managers, city attorney. You know, today, the word excellence was said several times. This indeed is the city of excellence. Today, earlier, at least several students spoke, a reflection of our future of the city. Students that uh, had a opportunity to live and study at ACES or other schools. And what I wanted to just say is that, I want to go on record and say, look, I'm not against pickleball. I respect my neighbors here that want to play pickleball. As a matter of fact, everybody at my office talks about pickleball. I want to begin playing pickleball. The city of excellence, Aventura deserves pickleball courts. However, I have to admit that even though I live very close to the proposed project, this location is not the correct. And again, I'm not an engineer and this is just my opinion. But this location is not the correct location for this project. And I believe strongly that there are potentially other locations that may be more fitting and more appropriate. Um, I'm very proud of that little park. As a matter of fact, when people come over and see it, I'm proud to tell them, yes, we have this little park with planters and, and whatnot. My kids, when they ask daddy, why, why do we have this here? And I explain to them. And I realized that maybe there'll still, still be a section for that or whatnot. But with the school right across the street there, and I could just imagine kids sitting in class during maybe a quiet period and surely they will hear some type of noise coming from across the street, especially with the way the condos are constructed surrounding the potential project and where it's being proposed. What I ask today is, and I realize that we're very far along in the process and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for explaining how this came to where we are today. What I ask is that the board, the commission considers to at least defer this project, uh, this decision awarding this contract at least just a little further, just to reflect excellence in reassessing and ensuring that this indeed is the best location. Sometimes when you take a second look, sometimes something else might come to light or at least we solidify the fact that this is the best location. But I ask that we consider to at least, as you can see the turnout here, let's defer it at least one other time and reassess, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
My name is Michael Jacobs, two oh eight seven five Northeast thirty-first place. I understand it's a hotly debated uh, topic and I respect everyone's opinion. Uh, thank you, Mayor Weinberg and Aventura Commission for allowing all of us to step up to the plate and talk about this issue. Uh, I am honored to be accompanied by a few of my softball brothers who are at the back of the, the room. Uh, none of us here, uh, from the Aventura Adult Softball League are on the same team. We have nine teams in our league, uh, but they all know I would do anything for them and I know the reverse is true. Uh, I am the commissioner of the Aventura Adult Softball League. And sorry to get a little personal, but I'm also the survivor of stage four cancer. When I was diagnosed eleven years ago, uh, the two main motivational factors, while I went through six rounds of chemo to get better, was uh, for my daughter to have a father growing up and to play softball again at Founder's Park. Uh, can't stress how much that helped me get through what I had to go through. Um, the suggestion to build tennis and pickleball courts on the field where we have played for over twenty-five years every Sunday does not sit well with me or the hundred and fifty-plus players that come out weekly uh, for three seasons a year, uh, we play all year round. And uh, we really do look forward to, a lot of us that play, really look forward, uh, after working, I'm a dentist all week pulling teeth. I look forward to going out and playing on Sundays at that field, uh, with all of my friends. Uh, and many of my close friends have been made through softball in Aventura. And many of those people are Aventura policemen, representatives, real pillars of our community. The league attracts many people to the park, families, kids, we do tournaments there, softball tournaments. They look forward to watching games and using the excellent facilities provided by our elected officials. I also coach my son's soccer team at Founder's Park. Uh, we use Founder's South to park, uh, when there are not enough spaces, uh, for games and practices. And I do love the idea of expanding the parks. And from what I understand, there is enough space in Founder's Park South for everyone to share it. So I implore the city to please proceed with the already approved plan to build new courts at Founder's South and I urge them to do it now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Uh, good evening, my name is Greg Salazar and I'm thirty, um, six seventy-five North Country Club Drive, Aventura. Um, I've been an Aventura resident for over twenty years and I lived at Doral before. And I first wanted to thank you guys, uh, you guys work really hard. Um, every single person here, I'm very proud of what you guys do. And we live in a three-mile radius city and I know you cannot please anyone, everyone. But um, you know, I'm thinking back in what Michael Jacobs said. I've been playing for, you know, over twenty years here at the softball league. I was also a coach, my son is here, uh, for soccer and basketball. So, you know, what we have going on right now is amazing. Uh, I, I'm uh, pro sharing spaces because, you know, we all have to get along and a sport is wonderful. I, I believe in, you know, having athletes and, and kids going and playing sports here. So I, I'm in favor of pickleball in the South Park. And um, you know, thank you guys for everything you do. Uh, it's a, it's a hard job, but I'm very happy to be a part of this wonderful city and thank you again.
Thank you. And I, I, I wanted to mention to the prior speaker before you, uh, congratulations on beating stage four cancer. Name and address, please.
Alessio Lombardi, three zero two nine Northeast one eighty-eight Street. I'm a proud resident of Aventura, husband and father to two kids. I'm also happen to be one of the coaches of the City of Aventura Soccer Tournament in Aventura, Founder's Park North. I'm a sport fanatic, I played professional soccer back in Italy. And I am not against pickleball nor tennis court, nor more of those in Aventura. What I'm against with, uh, too, is that in two thousand and twenty-three, we're thinking to tore down Green Park to cement it and pave it with more cement. Uh, it should not be a matter of putting people that like pickleball against people that like green space. It should be a matter of preserving what we have and add more. So I'm here today to ask you to defer the decision and to hear us further so that we can find a better place for Aventura. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hi, name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Polona Strumberg, thirty-six ten Yacht Club Drive. Um, I wrote something, but I believe everything was said already. So um, I just want to add that the city is getting so busy, traffic, noise, everything. I just believe having a peaceful green park is just a treasure in the city. So I really wish that you reconsider of destroying it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, name and address, please.
Hi, good evening, my name is Chiara Tomozelli. I live at three zero six zero Northeast one ninety Street. Uh, I'm reading this letter on behalf of Marcel Fisher, who's my friend, president of Hidden Bay Homeowners Association, who could not be here tonight. Last night, the possible park conversion was discussed in the open forum portion of our monthly board meeting. The consensus was overwhelmingly in favor of installing the pickleball and tennis courts at another location. No one is against pickleball courts or more tennis courts, it's great for Aventura. But our first concern is traffic. Apparently, no traffic study was done, but we can tell all that it should be, uh, done. At different times of the day, the traffic leading to the gatehouse for Aventura Marina and Hidden Bay backs up. So adding another possible forty cars an hour if all the courts are occupied and players each drive themselves adds a huge burden. So definitely it's not, this is not acceptable. Also, our residents are agus at the possibility of bulldozing a passive park that many enjoy walking in or sitting on a bench and reading. It is the only passive green park in the area and taking that away is abominable, abominable. The aura is totally different across the road at Founder's Park. We also question whether the DEC has done and approved environmental studies since the park is on the water. There are too many issues and concerns by this community for the city to proceed with the pickleball and tennis courts at Founder's Park South at this time. So we respectfully request that the project be tabled until a lot more thought and due diligence is put into where it should be located. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Leon O'Hallivoe, thirty-three hundred Northeast one hundred eighty-eighth Street. Sorry, this microphone's a little low. I, I think what the city has approved is, is brilliant. Um, I, I grew up here, I've been in Aventura for almost forty years. I've been here since, uh, before any of the bridges that you see were built or any of the buildings or any of the parks. Um, and I think what has not only been proposed but approved is an incredible compromise. Um, we're not only a city of excellence, we're also a city of community and we're also a city of growth. There's a reason why the city of Aventura continues to be one of the premier cities in all of Florida and why people are flocking from all over the world to live here. And it's not because the city has stayed stagnant, but rather because the city has been at the forefront of advancement and building a community and, and doing things and implementing changes that are important for its, for its community. Uh, I grew up here, my kids go to school here. I have heard a lot of anecdotal evidence about, uh, why this proposed project, approved project, uh, may be detrimental. And, and I certainly understand those opinions, but there is a different side to this. Uh, and there is, I can't help but give anecdotal, anecdotal evidence of my own. Uh, and there's a reason why pickleball is the largest growing sport in the U.S. three years in a row. First year might have been easy because it was the first year of growth, but year after year, the level of involvement and community in pickleball is unlike anything I've ever seen. I played professional tennis, I played basketball and soccer at very high competitive levels. I have never seen a level of inclusion and community and kindness and well-being and mental health like I've seen in pickleball. My father was also a, a top athlete in, in Columbia, my family's from Columbia. He moved here to play tennis at the University of Miami. He hurt his back in his forties and pretty much hasn't played a sport since. Uh, he came with me to a pickleball tournament in Orlando and pretty much daily since then, this was in December, has asked me to play pickleball. We don't have where to play pickleball. Uh, so I bought a little five-foot net so that we could hit some balls in, in his backyard. Uh, but we deserve better than that. And uh, I think the details do matter. We're not asking for an ice skating rink or a garage, uh, or a different sport. The fact that this is specifically pickleball is for a very good reason. And it's not pickleball in lieu of the garden. Uh, it, it, it's, it seems like a great compromise, whereas the opponents of this project seem to just want it elsewhere and saying not in my garden. We've been waiting two years for this, it's about time the city approves this. It's already been approved and I urge you to please approve the budget. The community needs this, my father needs this, my kids need this, it's the only sport that they ask me to play together. And pickleball has been an equalizer of all ages and all skill levels and the city of Aventura needs this to continue its excellence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If, if children are going to speak, just their first names, not the address, not their last names. Hi, can you pull that microphone down for her so everyone at home can hear her also? Hi.
Um, I'm Penelope and um, this park is a part of my soul and part of many other peoples. If you take away this and build pickleball and tennis courts, then you will um, chip a piece of my soul. You can chip a piece of my soul if you want, but that would be very mean.
Thank you. Very well done. Who's next? Just your first name, young man.
Hi, my name is Manuel Campania. And...
I, okay, I love Founders Park South. Please, I love Founders Park South. Don't take this away from the people who love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address.
Good evening. My name is Alexis Thames. I live at three three zero Northeast Hundred Ninetieth Street, so right next to the proposed site. I felt compelled to speak because of my two daughters. You know, although pickleball and other sports are fantastic, and health is obviously a priority for all of us. The fact is, we don't have an abundance of green spaces, and the added noise pollution and traffic for that specific sector is quite a concern. The park is important for residents' physical and mental health, especially seniors, and the density of construction that we have already. This is a little oasis, if you will. And it is a stark contrast compared to all the hive of activity on the north side park. So like with other residents, all we would like is for reassessment of the project to find maybe a more suitable space that aligns with the city's sustainability efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi. Name and address, please.
Larry Sobel, thirty-three hundred Northeast Hundred Ninetieth Street. Listen, I've been listening to all white people don't want pickleball. It's crazy. Pickleball is the greatest sport in the world for every age. Republicans talk to Democrats. It's unbelievable. I mean, I go to Hollywood, where I'd rather go to Aventura. And you see people who never liked each other are hugging each other. It's the greatest social sport, and at the same time, you're getting health. It's healthy. How many older people my age go out and play soccer, football, or any of those sports? This is a sport made for it, and this is the city of excellence. So anybody can come up against it. I'm telling you, Aventura has to have it. And from the people I talk to, that's they want it. They want it. There's no reason we shouldn't have it, and that spot's perfect. It's perfect. You've got movie night. You got soccer. You got baseball. Why can't you have, what do you call it? Do you understand? Pickleball. I can't believe my wife. Bye-bye. It's a long story. But that's, by the way, is your name really Billy Joel? He's my favorite guy. Anyhow, it's honestly, you gotta be crazy not to have it. You'll be the only class city not having it. And what do these people that don't like it want to do? Sit in their condos? Come on. Get your act together. This is it.
Thank you, and thank you for the entertainment. We're here. We're here. We're here the first Tuesday of every month. Come and speak on any topic. Hi. Name and address.
Hi, my name is Najeli. I live in twenty-one two twenty Harbor Way. And I love to play pickleball, but I love that place. It's so beautiful. It's so enchanted. And I think it's the only place you can see water. You have hills. It's a round of trees. And I think in this moment, we need more green places. Our kids need more. It's the only place you can be in peace. The other one, of course, you can play soccer. You've got a lot of things. But this is the only place you can meditate. You can do yoga. It's a very, very special place for us. And this is the city of excellence. Please make this city a green place. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Emily Primar. I live at thirty-one thirty-one Northeast one eighty-eight Aventura. And my husband and I just recently moved to Aventura. We actually bought a condo at the atrium right across the waterway from Founders South, right beside the school. So we were a little bit surprised to hear about this. We bought in April, and this was the first we actually heard about it a couple of days ago. And in fact, when we notified the rest of the owners at the atrium, a good majority of them also did not realize that this had moved forward as far as it had. So a lot of people have said a lot of things. I'm not going to repeat any of those. I've also heard many. And I agree with both sides. I'm not here to basically say I'm against pickleball. I've never played it. But I am very avid outdoors person, so I can appreciate the need for additional outdoor activities. However, because I do live, it is going to be in my backyard, a couple of things that I would like to mention or ask is no one has mentioned that there are currently four pickleball courts at the community center. There is not. There isn't. Well, it's on their website that you can bring your own nets. You can bring your own nets and you can do it. Okay, so obviously my research is wrong or their website is incorrect. And the other thing is, is there not any type of county? There's a Miami-Dade County Noise Ordinance. I think somebody mentioned about the school and how the noise can basically carry across water. We know that, you know, noise can basically carry across water very far. There's actually nothing to have a barrier between the courts, proposed courts, and the school. So if noise is going to carry like that, how do you basically account for that there is a noise ordinance for Miami-Dade for within a certain distance? So I wonder if that has been discussed or if there's been a study on that. And I also looked at the proposed PDF, the layout of where the courts are, where the three tennis courts and the six pickleball courts are. And there's no barrier whatsoever in terms for noise containment. There is gates. There's proposed, I think it's white fencing. But I question if that's going to put any type of a barrier on noise, since a lot of the the concern here is maybe for noise in the area. Oops, I'm out of time. But I wonder if those studies have been done. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. Name and address, please.
Charles Primmer, thirty-one thirty-one Northeast one eighty-eight. That's my wife. Just a couple of things. As she stated, we moved here about a year ago. And one of the first places that we visited was this park. And we walked around it, and it was a selling point for us to move to the city. It was amazing. We were like, wow, this city has, you know, got green space. We definitely like the outdoors. And so, you know, I hope you, you know, look for a place where you don't have to take the green with concrete. So that's definitely a concern. I know she talked about the noise. If you go forward with this, please take that in consideration in your designs so that you surround these things with some kind of noise, you know, barrier so that it doesn't carry out of the courts. It will impact us. We face that park. We can see it. And as everyone knows, if you've heard a boat with their music on, it amplifies on the water. Definitely a concern for the school. You do need to look at the Miami-Dade laws and make sure that, you know, that park putting the noise isn't going to, you know, go against those rules. Anyway, I do appreciate what you do. It's a thankless job, but I do appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Clara Sherman. I don't know her address. Her address is two zero two eight one East Country Club Drive. My reason why you shouldn't build pickleball there is because even though it may benefit some people, a lot of kids and younger people may not want to play pickleball, and it's a very beautiful place. And I love the greenery there, and I don't think it would be a great idea to put pickleball there.
Thank you. Hi. Name and address, please.
Hi, Cindy Orlinsky, two zero zero five one Northeast Thirty-seventh Court. I've lived in the city for thirty years. My kids have all gone through Aces and the high school now. One part of the community that was taken away many years ago were the basketball courts. So this was brought up to the commission many years ago, that my son in particular is a basketball enthusiast. And there is nowhere for the kids to play basketball. I bring this up because the commission has taken time and energy to find another location for the basketball courts as they have done with the gardening and now the pickleball. So it's a holistic approach. Since two thousand seventeen, we haven't had basketball, public basketball courts for the kids to go to. Now there is a location for basketball. I'm understanding next to the peninsula, which is amazing. So that will come, and the kids will enjoy. And the gardening will be moved, and pickleball will be joining our community. And I thank you for always keeping an eye out for what's important for the entire community and all of its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. So I don't see any other speakers, so I will close the public comment. I was not sure if I should respond or not, but it was going to be based on what I heard tonight. And again, I understand where the people are coming from, because again, if I wasn't up here, I probably would have been one of the speakers, because where I live, I would prefer that this project not happen. Because then I would be able to just advocate for my needs or my agenda. But up here, it's different. And some of the comments were basically stating that this commission doesn't operate correctly or doesn't take the people's interests to heart. And it's so unfair to the public servants, this commission and the prior commissions. I advocated, I worked very hard for those gardens. I'm the one that got the rules and regulations from Surfside because they had gardens before Aventura and helped to devote, to spend the money to build those gardens. But someone mentioned the history. So it's a very good segue because I'm going to give you a brief PowerPoint so you know the history. I'm going to base it on fact. I always do my own research. As I'm sure you've heard many times, I rode the circulator buses for four months before I proposed freebie for Aventura. I was sitting where you are when the prior commission was discussing this issue, and I heard about how many people are in the park, how many people enjoy Founders Park South, and I live there. And I said, something's not matching the narrative. I go by there twice at minimum every day, and I don't see what the people are talking about. But then I understand people are advocating for their interests. So fact-based, I'm going to give you a brief history of what this commission and the prior commissions have done. So the first picture is a young, arguably somewhat handsome commissioner. And that is opening day of Peace Park November twenty sixteen, where the city worked very, very hard to create a green space because we had actually lost some green space in twenty fourteen at Founders Park South. And we wanted our residents to have as much green space and open space as possible. So we worked with a developer, and we put the squeeze on them. In order for them to build their project, we got them to donate the land so that we could have a new park. We were able to do this without cost. Of course, it costs money to build the park, but we got the land for free, and we did this as a commission to benefit our residents. So go to the next picture, please. That's Peace Park. Now, what I hear tonight is the only place with green space, the only place we could go is Founders Park South. It's simply not true. This is two blocks away from Founders Park South, okay? Right in the neighborhood. It has much bigger grassy area. And it's very, very peaceful. It's so popular. Last June, we installed restrooms there. Next picture. This is the park where most of the moms go to push their strollers. This is the park with the nice circle, okay? This is the park that you'll see families. Next picture. This is the park where moms and their babies sit on the grass. Every time I get an email that Founders Park South is the only place, it upsets me because we worked so hard to create this space, and it's so popular, and it's so wonderful, and it's right in the neighborhood. And of course, if we built pickleball courts there, all the people who live next door to Peace Park would be in here because that's the way it works, okay? So that's not all. That's not all. At the same time, we were able to create Peace Park, this commission that has just been accused of not caring about the people or not doing things the right way, we created with an entrance right from Peace Park. And again, I just heard a woman say Founders Park South is the only place where you can see the water. Heard that. Next slide. We created a beautiful, beautiful short walk right from Peace Park, goes all the way around the waterfront, all the way to the Performing Arts Center. It is absolutely gorgeous. Yes, the city commission did that for the residents of Aventura. We're not taking away green space. We do our best to create green space. There's such tranquility. Next page. Look at that. That's a beautiful. You see water? Okay. Next one. Look at that. Oh, someone's walking their dog. Look at that. That is what we created by working with a developer, okay? So the city commission made that a reality for all of Aventura, okay? But that's not all we did. Next picture. Oh, look at that green space. That's Veterans Park. Of course, if we put pickleball there, everyone that lives next to Veteran Park would be here complaining. But that's Veterans Park. Several years ago, we were able to find a new dog park on two thirteen. So we removed it from Veterans Park and increased the green space. So that, look at with canopies there. We created that more green space, much bigger than Founders Park South. Next. Yep, someone's on their laptop there. Someone's walking. There's a shade canopy again, right here in Aventura. The city commission did that. Next page. Next picture, please. Now, do you notice something different? It's not even close. Not even close. That's Founders Park South. Okay, now, let me tell you. When I came out of a commission meeting, I wasn't a commissioner. I was sitting there where you are. And I took a picture. I took this picture because I didn't understand why everyone was saying in the meeting, oh, this is where everyone goes to picnic, and everyone goes to learn to ride a bike, and every child goes to take their first steps. And I was like, really? Well, I took this picture. Obviously, it's not staged. That is a Saturday. That is July thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, at two twenty-six P.M. You can look at the sky. It is a gorgeous day. You will not see a single person there. Nobody's picnicking. This is not opinion. This is fact. There is nobody there. Now, what you'll notice is that most of the green space, that used to be beautiful, beautiful green space, now it's fenced in. The taking of green space occurred years ago when we gave three dozen lucky people gardens. A fence was built, keeping out all of Aventura, okay? That's a taking. Next page. With a lock. People of Aventura were locked out of Founders Park South so that a few dozen people could have so that a few dozen people could have a garden. I pushed for it, I advocated for it. Thinking of it now, imagine, green space was taken away. This is a public park owned by the people of Aventura. It doesn't matter what you do inside that gate, we built wooden boxes and put soil in it. Doesn't matter if you put in a tennis court or you put in wooden boxes. We took that space, that's why there's nobody there. They're at the other parks where they have, still have their green space. We took that. Next page. Okay, does anybody think that's okay? This is a public park, this is a public park. The residents of Aventura are locked out. All I hear is, don't let the city take our green space. The green space was taken years ago by the gardeners. This is a fact, this is not an opinion. Now, I'm in favor, we're going to rebuild, you're still going to have your gardens. But let's be honest, we took from the residents of Aventura their public park, and we gave it to a group of gardeners. I thought it was a good idea at the time. Next. There's the park. This is the day that a bunch of the gardeners and concerned citizens did a staged video shoot for Channel Ten. Well, you know, this is right before the video shoot. This is at two fifty-seven in the afternoon. There's not a single person in the park. Few minutes later, there were, because they did a shoot for the news. This is not opinion, this is fact. This is fact, okay? This is fact, there's nobody there. So next one. This picture is Saturday, April first. This was three days ago. Again, I walk past it every day, not a single person there on a Saturday afternoon. So again, as I said, I would advocate with you to not touch that park, because I live there. But up here, we have to advocate for what's best for everyone. And the fact of the matter is, by fencing out that beautiful green space where people used to sit and take sun and read books, and we locked it, it changed the whole dynamic of that park. Not today, not tomorrow. Next, it happened years ago. So I want to bring some fact into the equation. The manager has told us and the community services director the ideas people came up with, build it at L.A. Fitness. Well, we can't build on private property. Build it in the empty space next to the existing tennis courts. That's an easement for water and sewer. The, the fact of the matter is, wherever, there is no perfect solution. Wherever we put it, this room will be filled with the people who live there. But there are many reasons that have been explained why this is the best location. But it isn't the city now taking green space from this park. It happened a long time ago, and when there was a fence put up and a lock put up, no one that was getting a garden said, you know, we really shouldn't be taking the green space away from the people of Aventura. Okay, that's a fact. Again, I advocated for it, maybe it was a mistake. We're going to rebuild every one of those gardens. But you know, it is a taking. It is a taking from the people who own this park. Everyone owns that park. So we need to all be neighbors, and we need to all compromise. Nobody gets everything they want. Public comment is closed. So do any other commissioners have a comment? Commissioner Stern?
So I, I wasn't going to talk, but I feel, I, I really want to, and I probably am going to regret what I'm going to say, but it's important to me. First of all, when you were all talking, we were listening. When the mayor's talking, you guys are talking, and I think that's disrespectful, that's number one. I heard someone say the word disgusting. And two things I want the commission to hear and for you to hear. There are seven of us here. We represent forty-plus thousand people in this, in this community. It is impossible to please everybody. Our goal is to please as many people as we can and do the right thing. That's why you elected us. The city put out a P S A for me to celebrate colon cancer awareness. To use that Facebook post to rope in the garden, taking away Founders Park, I thought that was irresponsible. Took the high road, I called the person who posted, had a great conversation, almost an hour. I said, I'm willing to take a ride with you anywhere in the city. Plenty of places that you just saw. Whether you agree or not that those pictures are truth or not, I'm not here to convince you if, if it's not. I'm telling you, there is other spots that can satisfy the need for meditation and tranquility. Great conversation. That person took a ride, because I got a long email, totally opposite of what we talked about. And tonight, I said, did you share that with any of your other colleagues? No. I then talked to some of you here, and the narrative did not change. You're, I'm not here to change your mind, but when you say to me that because I'm going to, if I agree with this, that if I don't change my vote, that I'm not going to have a second term in this city, I've given my life to this city. I think that's disgusting. That we're trying here, do what's best. You don't have to agree, and I'm not going to convince you to agree. But to treat me like that on those two things, I want everyone up here to know that, and I want you to know that. We're doing, you have an incredible commission up here. We work our butts off to do the right thing. It's okay you don't agree, but don't treat us this way. Thank you.
No, no clapping, please. Anybody else in the commission? Yes, Commissioner Friedland?
Are we, are we going to be voting now? Okay, so I just wanted to say that I have listened to all of you here today and everyone for the past number of months. And if this was about reconsidering the location, I might consider some other action or looking further into it. But you are here today, whether you read the agenda or not, for one reason, what we are here for, and it was selecting a contractor. I do believe the contractor that went through the open bidding process is the best person for this job. And since that is what my job and my responsibility tonight here is, despite all of the comments, I'm going to vote for the contractor that's the best for the job that I believe.
Any other comments? Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloom?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Friedland?
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Marks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joel?
Yes.
And Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item ten, I believe. Any reports? Commissioner Friedland?
I just want to, yeah, sure.
Let's hold off until the noise subsides. Okay, reports. Commissioner Friedland?
I just want to acknowledge that last week, myself, the mayor, Commissioner Amit Bloom, Commissioner Stern, the city manager, the assistant city manager, we all traveled to Tallahassee for two days to meet with our elected officials up there and different members of the community to work again for what is the best interest of our city. And I want to thank all of them who took the time away from their families and their homes and their other work jobs to go and travel. And I don't think we're going to be discussing exactly who we met with and what we met to discuss at this point, because it's not all fully worked out. But we are working on some projects that we hope will be the best for our community and our city going forward. And I also wanted to acknowledge my, what I consider to be my beautiful pink and white scarf is a gift from Dade Days, which was artistically designed by a student from the New World School of the Arts. And each year, there is a different scarf or tie that goes along with the week that recognizes our county. So I just want to say thank you to my fellow commissioners and whoever was able to join with us, because I know we were all working for the good of this community.
Any other reports? I'll report that on Sunday, myself, the county mayor, and Commissioner Steinberg were on a panel at the Aventura Turner Jewish Center, Michael Putney moderated. We were discussing the role faith plays in our public service. So it was well worthwhile. And the other thing is, that was Sunday, because why should we have a day off? On Saturday, Commissioner Friedland and I presented a proclamation to Sylvia Miller Sue, who turned one hundred and six years old, Aventura resident. I think, I might be mistaken, I'm pretty sure she plays pickleball three days a week.
I want to say if she starts to play pickleball, she will make it to be the oldest resident of Aventura at one hundred and twenty.
Any other reports? Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, so on Saturday, while you were doing the beautiful party, our wonderful former mayor, Enid Weissman, and myself were honored to go to a, to a funeral for a African-American community leader who was very beloved in the community. And we, Mayor, Mayor Weinberg did a proclamation for our request, and, and we went up there to this beautiful African-American church. We had our, our representative, Frederica Wilson, was there. There was all kinds of commissioners and, and mayors, and we got up there to give the presentation. So we represented the city over there as well, and it's wonderful that we are also doing outreach into the African-American community, and we let them know that we are here for them as well, and thanked them for the opportunity, and also, of course, gave condolences to the family of Mr. Lewis.
Commissioner Friedland, have another report?
Yes, I want to say thank you, Commissioner Cruz, for reminding me. So yesterday, because then it was, I think, Monday, to keep the week going, I was invited to join the A J C, the American Jewish Conference, for their model and what was so incredibly impressive about that was there were many elected officials and members of the community. Frederica Wilson was there, but they had brought in council generals from, I think, twelve different countries. And the four questions, which is a Jewish tradition to read in a Passover seder, were read by the council general of Germany in their native language, the council general of Japan in his native language, the council general of France, and the council general of, I'm going to say this wrong, Barana, Barani? Barini, thank you. And what we were able to do is reach out to each and every one of them and ask them to come and speak hopefully in the city of Aventura to work on community development and good ties for all of our residents. So thank you for reminding me about that.
Mr. Manager?
For you, Hidden Bay. Hidden Bay.
Oh, yes, I made a lot of friends in the building I live in this evening. They, they don't know it, but one of the things that they had asked me to do recent past was, there seemed to be a switch unintentionally by the county, and all of a sudden, we have Marina Del Rey Boulevard on one Ninetieth Street. For many years, including on my mortgage, that was Hidden Bay Drive. But we had requested from the county, and today it was approved, that we will be returning to Hidden Bay Drive on one Ninetieth Street, and no longer be Marina Del Rey, which has no meaning in Aventura since before incorporation. So thank you to the manager for, for getting, for getting that done. We're now moving on to public comment. If, if anyone wants to speak, I'll have the attorney read the rules, but I don't think, oh, okay, so Mr. Attorney, can you explain the rules?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is the point in time in the meeting where individuals who want to appear before the commission have three minutes to speak on items that have not otherwise been covered during the meeting, but fall within the jurisdiction of the city. And it's not an opportunity for back and forth between members of the commission and the speaker. It's just three minutes for the speaker to make his or her remarks. And if there's some follow-up, the manager would be the one who would probably follow up after the meeting.
So no pickleball conversation?
No pickleball conversations, yeah.
Yehun Kanchina on one hundred eighty-eight Street, thirty, thirty, the building. I know if the commission has authority to do this, but anyway, I have like an idea for me. My speech is about the process of school lottery enrollment in ACES. I've heard many comments from other people, and I personally had some experience in that, how people do it at different schools outside, outside of Florida. It's an open process. So I believe that we can adopt this process to ACES as well. As far as I understand now, I, twice I participated in this lottery, and both times it were unlucky. This is pretty much hidden process. What I say, that's some kind of third-party organization is doing some random choosing of the people, and it's quite hidden for me. I believe that with nowadays technology, it's very easy to set up. Some, some kind of Zoom meeting can be done, and it can go open up, and people can see how the lottery is, is done. And then there are going to be no questions of people, how, how is it going to be maintained, or how the process of choosing is, is processed. So I believe it's very easy thing to do. Everybody can get a link, and anyone who is interested in that and participating in that lottery can go in, see how this process is done, and no questions asked. So you see the number, you see the child, or you see the person there, that's it, it's, it's all done. Because as of now, we just get the results, and it's pretty frustrating how the people are chosen there and how the process is done. So that's, that's my comment. I believe it's very easy to do, and I mean, it's, it's no effort, no money. Should be involved, it's just a link and everybody can see. That's it.
Thank you. Can you set up a meeting with the manager and give him more information? I think everyone up here would favor more transparency, if there's a way to do a lottery like you're suggesting, as long as we maintain the integrity of it.
Yeah, of course.
We, let him, please let him know, and then he'll explain it to us. If it's doable, I certainly don't object to that. So we, our biggest concern is that so many parents get bad news with the lottery. More than half don't get in, and that's something we, we hope to change with a new, an additional school. But right now, you're suggesting, please explain it to the manager one-on-one. Thank you so much. So any other business? Seeing none? Sure. Commissioner Bloom?
Just really quickly, wanted to wish everybody in the room either a happy Passover or a happy Easter, depending on what you celebrate. And if you don't celebrate, just happy, happy.
And happy Ramadan, too.
I'm asking for a motion to adjourn. Vice Mayor Joel and a second Commissioner Friedland. All in favor, say aye very loudly.
Aye.
We're adjourned.